Good morning. I'd like to firmly wish a good morning to all in Harrisville and welcome those joining us online to the regular meeting of the Board of Lane County Commissioners. Today's Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. Last week, as our inspiration was one of the great American heroes had passed, astronaut Jim Lovell, who dared and dreamed to lead others to places few of us could even imagine. Lovell, for a long time, was the single most daring person who reached into the darkness of space than any person on the planet. His thirst for risk and adventure and leadership paved the way for others to follow in the program that we now have, our space program. He had the grit and greatness and the desire to bring as many with him as he could, and he was a great leader in our country. And during the nail-biter of Apollo 13, his mother was quoted as saying that if anyone could get his astronauts home, it was her Jimmy because he could fly a washing machine from the moon and get his people back. So I thought that was a really great quote from his mother. Jim Lovell was 97, a true American hero. Good morning to my colleagues whom I serve alongside and to you, Mr. Mokraski, our county administrator. How are you today, sir?
Good, thank you.
Good. Is there any adjustments to our agenda?
None from staff.
I believe there is one from the council.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. The first executive session at the end of the morning session here is not ready for prime time and can be canceled, and I'll be rescheduling it probably for August 26th.
Okay, so later on, we'll be reading into a single exec session. Then, any emergency business, sir, Mr. Mokraski? Great, thank you. Public comments is our next item, and I see a shaking head back there from our staff person. Thank you, Rio. No one has signed up for public comments, which is kind of a first, eh, colleagues? What do you think? This meeting could go by pretty fast today, right?
Just for clarification from council, so we have one topic this morning, and then we still have the 1:30 session, is that right?
Commissioner Trigger, yes, we still have the 1:30 executive session.
Thank you.
All right.
And Chair, I would like to confirm we do not have anyone joining us online for public comment.
Thank you very much. I was just gonna ask that. Thank you. So, if there's no public comments scheduled, we'll move on to our fourth item, which is our consent calendar. All items here are considered routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion to these items. If a discussion would have been desired, that item would have been pulled for further discussion, and the details to those items can be found in the blue links on the agenda on the website. I'm looking for a motion for the consent calendar, please.
Chair, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025.
And is there a second?
No second.
And thank you. Might I just make a late notification? Our Commissioner Farr is out today, excused absence. Want to make sure I noted that before our first vote, so thank you very much. So, the consent calendar's been moved and approved. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar passes 4-0 with Commissioner Farr excused absence. Thank you very much. Our next item is our county administration item, our Order 2508-1205 in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to sign an extension lease agreement with Carry It Forward for real property at 525 North Highway 99. I'm looking to my county administrator, who's also looking for Ms. Kelly Hancock, who is probably thinking we're still in public comment this time.
Yeah. I wonder if, because Mr. -- maybe Chair, if you'd like to go to 5B.
We can certainly do that.
Mr. Harris is here, and then we will work on getting the 5A.
Yeah, you can just hear the rush of the wind at this meeting going forward. Yeah, yeah.
You're moving too efficiently.
We are, yeah. Item 6B, which then we'll move to, thank you for that, is a discussion in Order 2508-1206 in the matter of authorizing the county administrator or the delegate to enter into an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, for those in the online, with different authorities. And I believe Jason Harris, our Community Economic and Development Manager, will explain that fully and completely. And Jason, it's all yours. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the public. I'm Jason Harris, Lane County's Community Economic Development Manager, providing a short verbal presentation today. This is the last step of processing Sierra Pacific Industries' application for the state property tax program called the Strategic Investment Program, also referenced as its acronym, SIP, S-I-P. On June 10th, the Board approved the SIP agreement between Sierra Pacific and the county. And then, following that, on July 11th, the Oregon Business Development Commission approved Sierra Pacific's SIP application and the company's eligibility to access the SIP program. Per the SIP statute, Sierra Pacific is required to pay a community service fee equal to 25% of the property tax savings to be distributed to the county and the non-education taxing districts in the project area. Over the 15-year SIP term, it is estimated that there will be 2 million of community service fees to be distributed. There are three taxing districts in the project area: Lane Fire Authority, the Upper Willamette Soil and Water District, and the Junction City Water Control District. Staff recommends the percentage distribution allocation use the same percentage allocation as the existing property tax revenue percentage rates. As outlined in the staff report, the following percentage allocations are as follows: Lane Fire Authority of 50.5% allocation of the community service fee, Lane County 42.7%, the Junction City Water Control District at 5.3%, and the Upper Willamette Soil and Water District at 1.5%. This concludes the staff presentation. Staff seeks the Board approval of the staff recommendation and the Board order, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Harris, very much. Any questions from the Board? Been down this road a number of times, great information that you've shared along the way, and this is a great program, so we're really excited to get this going. If there is no questions or comments, I'm ready for a motion on the order.
Chair, I've got a motion. I move to approve Order 2508-1206 in the matter of authorizing the county authority, Upper Limb Soil and Water Conservation District, and Junction City Water Control District, and set the distribution percentage allocation for the annual community service fee collected from Sierra Pacific Industries', SIP, S-I-P.
All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Buck to approve the Order 2508-1206 in the matter of accepting the authorizations for intergovernmental agreements with Sierra Pacific Industries under the Strategic Investment Program. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Farr excused absence. Mr. Harris, well done. Thank you for that perseverance, sir. Good job.
Chair?
Yes.
When you just recalled the vote, you said 4-1. Can you please?
4-0, excuse me, 4-0 with Commissioner Farr excused absence. Thank you for that correction. All right, our next item up would be county administration announcements. Mr. Mokraski, is that you?
And I'm happy to do announcements, and then if we don't have staff here for Item 5A, I think I can handle that because I'm pretty familiar with it. Two things I just wanted to share with the Board and the public, and let me just see. The first one was an update on fire activity. On Thursday, last Thursday, a wildfire broke out just east of Oak Ridge. It's called the Aubrey Mountain Fire. Thankfully, plenty of air support and quick response from fire crews on the ground over the weekend kept the fire small and away from homes. Really fast, rapid, and intensive response from fire crews. The sheriff's office was quick on the scene to assist with evacuations Thursday night when residents on Roberts Ranch Road and Dunning Road were asked to evacuate their homes. That was a Level 3 evacuation. Notice that was put out, and the sheriff's office was on top of that. There is an estimated 55 people and 17 homes in that area. Thanks to the aggressive suppression of the fire, the evacuation notice was lowered to a Level 1 on Sunday, so we're sitting at a Level 1 on that fire. And I just, again, want to recognize our emergency management team, the sheriff's office, Devin Ashbridge, our public information officer in particular, who assisted along with law enforcement and first responder in making sure that we got information out effectively to those residents. The other update that I want to provide for you is that Lane County is excited to introduce Tommy Gong. You may have seen the announcement that came out yesterday. Excited to announce that Tommy Gong is the new Lane County Clerk. Mr. Gong is an experienced election administrator who started his new role in July, just a few weeks ago. He was selected following a competitive national search. He succeeds Dina Dawson, who you all, Commissioners, are all familiar with, who went to the state. We've had a couple of these folks, right? Patience Winningham, who got promoted, you know, took a job as deputy director of Office of Emergency Management, and then Dina, who went up to be the director of elections. So, we always love it when our people are, have those opportunities. Demonstrates, I think, that we have really great people doing great work here in Lane County. So, that was the case here, but we're so excited that we were able to recruit an incredible talent in Mr. Gong, who will now take over and serve as our election administrator. He's been an election administrator for 22 years. He's previously served as administrator in California's Contra Costa County, very large county in Northern California, San Luis Obispo County, and Stanislaus County in California. He's also a member of the Bipartisan Policy Center's Task Force on Elections, a member of the Election Workforce Advisory Council, and on the Board of Directors for the California Voter Foundation. He was on the coalition that earned the prestigious Democracy Award for Best Practice of 2022 by the National Association of Election Officials, the Election Center. He has a bachelor's degree from the University of California at Berkeley, master's of business administration at San Francisco State University, one of the first graduates of the California Professional Election Administrator credential in 2005, and completed the National Certified Election Registration Administrator Program in 2021. I know that's a lot, but it's just like, we're so excited. We recruited hard, and we really put the hardcore press on to get Mr. Gong. We're so excited that he is going to be joining. So, looking forward to Commissioners having the opportunity to meet with and hear from him as we work through our election season. So, those are the two updates, unless you have questions for me, and then I'm happy to do Item 5A or attempt to do a fight of my item 5A for you.
Heck, we might have you do the rest of the agenda, Mr. Mokraski.
Well, I don't know about that.
So, we can go. Thank you for the announcement. It's pretty exciting. Mr. Gong's coming to us. He's got a great list of credentials. We're happy and thrilled to have him.
And we'll get him in front of the Board as soon as we can.
Great. Good. Good job. Okay, let's move to Item 5A, the Order 2508-1205, in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to sign an extension to the lease agreement with Carry It Forward on real property at 525 North Highway 99 Eugene, Oregon. Looks like Lauren's gonna save the day.
Lauren's here. I was gonna try to pinch-hit here, but Lauren will do a better job.
Lauren Blythe. Welcome, sir. How are you?
Good morning, Chair. How are you?
Go ahead and take it away when you're ready.
Good morning. So, this item in front of you is a matter of authorizing an extension of a lease with Carry It Forward. We're Lane County-owned property at 525 North Highway 99 in Eugene. That property was acquired years ago. Recall the date. In 2019 is when we entered into a lease agreement with Carry It Forward. Carry It Forward is a nonprofit organization that provides opportunities for folks to park RVs on our property, and they also have provided educational opportunities for folks to repair RVs at that location. And so, this is a request to extend the lease, I believe, for three years.
One year through '26.
One year through '26. Thank you.
And if I recall, the lease was at a whopping $1 a year. Was that lease correct? Is that what I read correctly? Just so the public knows, we're not leasing this at an exorbitant rate of fee. Yeah, good. Thank you.
That is correct, Chair. And Carry It Forward has been a great tenant at that.
And we're raising it to $12, $12 a year? That's what it is? Yeah, right. All right, good. Thank you. Yeah. Do want to make sure the public knew that. That was a great deal. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Blythe? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Chair, I have a motion. I move to approve Order 2508-1205 in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to sign an extension to the lease agreement with Carry It Forward for the real property at 525 North Highway 99 in Eugene, Oregon.
Super. And a second. Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Buck to approve Order 2508-1205 in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to sign a lease agreement with Carry It Forward for real property at 525 North Highway 99 in Eugene. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing -- yes, go ahead. Commissioner Trigger.
Thank you. Mr. Blythe, do you know, it looks like they've been working with the city, it says, with utility service. I assume it's, is it in the UGB but not in the city limits? Do we know? Is that right?
Chair, Commissioner Trigger, I do not know the property relative to the UGB. I believe it is in city limits, but I'm not sure about the UGB boundary.
Just thinking. Past the one year. I wasn't familiar with this property before, or it hadn't been, so just thinking ahead. Thank you for that.
Seeing no other questions, I'll call for the vote. All of those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Farr excused absence. All right, thank you very much. We are moving through, and we are now on our Public Works item, which is a first read.
Chair, yeah, we don't, we're working on getting folks, we're moving so quickly here, because you didn't have any public comment. My suggestion is maybe you could do Commissioner business, if you're comfortable doing that, and then I know Park staff is on their way for Item 6B.
Or we could take a 10-minute recess.
Or you could do that. Yes.
Let's do that. Let's take a 10-minute recess. We will reconvene. Let's take a little bit more than 10 minutes. We'll reconvene at 9:30 a.m. sharp. We are recessed.
This is still the Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. We're going to pick up on our Public Works Item 6A. And this is the item of the first reading of a draft ordinance and draft order to adopt erosion prevention measures in the Willamette Valley River Basin, which are Ordinance Number 2506 in the matter of amending Lane Code Chapter 9, Section 090, Chapter 11, Section 06016, Chapter 15, Section 005.010, and Sections 500.020-050 according to LC 9.090, LC 11.016, LC 15.005.1.010, and LC 15.500.020-050, and declaring an emergency, and Order Number 25081207 in the matter of amending Lane County Chapter 9, Section 030, LM 9.030. And Lorna Janeski, and she's a stormwater permitting specialist, and Maria Papagallo, our environmental engineering supervisor, are here to decipher all of those numbers and to give us the presentation and update. So take it away whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us, and good morning, everybody. Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. My name's Lorena Janeski, and this is Maria Papagallo. And thanks for having us. We're here for the first reading of the proposed erosion prevention updates to Lane Code and Lane Manual. These updates are required to meet the Water Quality Management Plan requirements of the county's total maximum daily load. That's TMDL for short. These new code requirements would apply to the Willamette River watershed basin. And want to clarify that the existing MS4, that's Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Erosion Prevention Regulations, those MS4 regulations that were adopted last year within the MS4 area around the cities of Eugene and Springfield, UGBs, those MS4 regulations, they stay the same. So these proposed regulations for the TMDL are on top of those regulations, in addition to. Our proposed code updates reflect the proposal that we brought to you back at the work session back in April. That was April 29th. And we haven't changed anything except we have added one amendment to that. We had planned on doing adoptions for erosion prevention in the right-of-way separately, as a separate process, but just to make things easier and more expedient, we are adding in erosion prevention measures to this proposal. These would apply to work within the right-of-way done by third parties, such as like through a facility permit. And these requirements are also included in the TMDL requirements and also in the MS4 requirements. So we would be meeting both of those permits through this procedure. And so we welcome public comments through this period. We have gone through a public outreach process, and we look forward to more as we go through the procedure. And we will presenting the material on August 26th. More in depth with a slideshow.
Great. Anything from Maria?
I think Lorena covered it well.
Okay, good deal. Well, remember, the staff, this is, and Board, this is simply a first reading, and the Board is reminded that any substantive questions for staff or the discussion on this matter would be served until the second reading and the public hearing. So this is that any members of the public with interest in this matter will have the benefit of hearing those discussions. And that said, are there any logistical or non-substantiative questions that the Board has at this time? Seeing none, we will, the staff then request a second hearing and a hearing date to be set for August 26, 2025, time certain, at 1:30 p.m. And do I hear a motion to approve the first reading and set the second reading and public hearing date?
Chair, I move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 25-06 and Order 25-08-12-07, and to set the second reading and public hearing for August 26, 2025, at 1:30 p.m., time certain, here in Harris Hall.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussions to the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Ordinance 2506 and Order 25081207, signify-
We're not approving the ordinance, Chair. We're approving-
First reading, first reading of the ordinance.
First reading and setting the second reading.
Right, that's what I read. So I'll read that again. This is move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2506 and Order 25081207, and set the second reading and public hearing for time certain date, August 26, 2025. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Farr, excuse absence. Thank you again. We'll see you later in August.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is a report from our Lane County Parks Levy update, which we requested a few weeks ago. Steve Rafuse, our Parks Superintendent, and Brett Henry, our Parks Division Manager, will be joining us. Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate you coming. And whenever you're ready with your slideshows and all that, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, so while we get that loaded up, first of all, as you know, the levy-funded, levy-funded projects are underway. And back in November of 2022, it passed. And, you know, it's really bolstered operations over that time. And that includes hiring key staff. With me today is Steve Rafuse. Steve is our Parks Superintendent. He began working for the county, actually on the eve of the ice storm back in January of last year. So since the passage of levy, I provided several updates to the Board and to the public. And this is consisting of some of the progress and accomplishments we've made, as well as kind of a preview of what's on the horizon as we look forward. Today, Steve is presenting the latest levy update. And he's the ideal person to do this, since he's really been the driving force behind a whole myriad of projects we've had over the year. And Steve, you know, whenever you're ready, go ahead and take it away.
Sure. Thanks, Brett. Good morning, Commissioners. It's good to see you again. Thanks for the opportunity to share some of our work and provide an update on the Parks Levy, the five-year Parks Levy. Got a few slides here. Mostly just want to provide a little background at the beginning, and then we'll go over some of the projects that we've completed so far. And then we'll talk about what exciting things are on tap for the coming months and the future years. So as we try to understand where we are today and where we're going in the future, it's good to kind of take a step back. So looking at the history of parks in Lane County, from the 50s to the 70s, it was a big period of growth. We were acquiring property and developing them into parks. And we had roughly about 35 full-time equivalent employees during that time. When the economy slowed down in the 80s, there was a big funding gap. And in 1982, we actually had to close parks. Were able to pull together some money, change our funding strategy, reopen in 1983. And from about the 80s until about 2018, it was pretty stagnant in terms of funding levels and investment. And so we had minimal staff. The infrastructure in our parks, a lot of it was developed during the 50s and the 70s, so starting to age. And we had deferred maintenance. And so we only had about 17 full-time equivalent employees, or roughly about half of during what we had during the heyday. In 2018, we completed a new Parks Master Plan. Recommendation for that was to look at sustainable funding into the future. And then you had the creation of the Parks Funding Task Force. That task force developed several recommendations and different ideas to pursue in terms of funding, ultimately how we got to the Parks Levy. And part of that process was trying to understand just what are the needs? How much do we really need to invest and where we need to invest? And that resulted in a facility condition assessment. I'll talk about that in a moment. And ultimately, in 2022, we put it before the voters to do essentially a five-year park levy for $31.4 million, or roughly about $6 million a year. So when we did the facility condition assessment, we only looked at 17 of our 65 parks, right? So we looked at the most developed, highest visited parks. And what essentially resulted from that was about $21 million, almost $22 million in capital needs. If we were to continue to wait another decade, that would have ballooned up to about $38 million. And so again, this is just our most visited parks. But you can see with that old infrastructure, there's a lot of dollars that need to get spent to bring our parks up to the parks that our community deserves. When the task force had looked at what the priorities are for the division going forward, park maintenance and operations, deferred maintenance were two of the highest items, also focus on conservation and habitat restoration projects, environmental and educational programming, and then also, I think for us as a division is projects that generate revenue. Our campgrounds are pretty successful. They tend to operate self-sufficiently. But the rest of the operation, how do we continue to fund that? Breaking down the levy, roughly about 37% of the levy is going into park operations. So that's maintenance, equipment, safety. So we had a really old fleet. We've been replacing lawn mowers and trailers and trucks, trying to build for the next 20 years. I mean, we're limping along some vehicles that still were created in the 1990s. So we're moving forward with that. We've been quite successful. We've ramped up our maintenance staff particularly, hired a few new key positions. 44% of the levy is going into focusing on facilities, trails, amenities in the parks, the restrooms, fixing up parking lots, replacing benches and picnic tables, making things look nice, special projects, cooperative grants. Those are things such as environmental education, funding for the arboretum. There was also a grant for the pickleball facility out of LCC, for the Mackenzie Hatchery as well, bunch of partners as well. So and also about 5% or roughly about $1 million from the levy will go to education and conservation. This sort of, you envision an X-Y axis here. So going from time 2023, with the first funding coming into the division, with that, we really started to purchase equipment, ramp up, hire a bunch of new staff, start to build up because it's a pretty big effort, pretty big level of effort to spend $30 million, particularly when you haven't had money for a while and you have small staff. So we started scoping capital projects, building up our staff and equipment. As we get into '24, '25, we're planning and designing, engineering and permitting, some of these larger capital projects, which I'll talk about in a moment. Our maintenance team has been rebuilt, so they're out there doing a lot of those sort of first impression improvements in parks, repainting kiosks, fixing things up, replacing signs. And then a few small construction projects. I'll talk about a few of those. And then as we get into spring next year, really is when we're going to start seeing big dollars being spent. This is when the North levy, or sorry, the North Jettie Project's going to be built. The Hendricks Bridge parking lot will be rebuilt. This is when big dollars are start, you'll start seeing those go into the ground. And then as we get out into about '26, '27, we start looking at what the needs that still remain in a future levy and what that might look like. But I think the key to that is we've got to demonstrate success before we even start asking for more funds. So what have we managed to accomplish so far? First thing to point to is, you know, staffing, equipment, security. So new ranger trucks, we've even brought ranger staff. We've shifted how we're staffing on the weekend so that we have ranger presence throughout the weekend, but also in the evening, sort of those more challenging times of day. And there, we have more on staff, so they're making more rounds. The number of incidents in parks have gone down. They're working on construction projects, small little construction projects during the winter when things close down, painting curbs, fixing up ADA spots. Also, you see cameras that we installed over at HBRRA Mount Pisgah. Those have noticed a decrease in calls and crime and break-ins. And then the middle photo here in the bottom is, this is our campground staff. These are volunteer hosts and caretakers, and a couple of new Kubota machines. And the reason I put that in there is, one of the key positions that we hired this year was a campground coordinator. We had made a great hire. And the amount of problems that don't come up because that position is there, we used to have vacancy throughout. So, you know, you'd have campgrounds operating with two hosts when there should be six or seven. We actually have more hosts than we have spots. And so by having a concerted effort, having that coordination between maintenance, the rangers, and the volunteer hosts on the ground has just eliminated a tremendous amount of problems. And our campground operations have been, really, I'd say, quite smooth this year. So this is a good example of some of those maintenance projects, low dollar, just things we need time to do. So the kiosk on the left is kind of a kiosk that, this is the condition of things when I started here about a year and a half ago. We just hadn't been able to get to it. The signs are all old and weathered. And so we completely redesigned all of our signs, sort of that first impression. As you come into the park, pressure washed, cleaned it up, took the old stuff out, put new stuff in. And so we're making these types of improvements. You know, and this is the first thing you see when you come into our park. And this tells you, is this place being cared for or not? These are very important. These are things that, particularly now as we get, you know, further into fire season, we're doing less mowing. We got more time for painting and these other small projects. This is another example of just refreshing the signs at the park. You know, we want that first impression to be welcome, not, don't do this, don't do that, you can only do this, and pay over here. So I think we've done a better job here. Yeah. So and then also, you know, other maintenance projects, these are, you know, low-dollar projects is about $8,000. And I think we got a grant from, was it Travel Lane County maybe, or?
Yeah, they assisted. It was another agency.
Yeah. But allow us to, at Hasida Beach, you know, if you have mobility challenges, if you're an older folks, or if you're in a wheelchair, it's really difficult to get out onto the beach. And so by putting these mats out, it really just helps everybody who goes out and visits the beach. And they were so successful, we actually bought more and have put them back out. But this is like a three-hour effort for our maintenance team.
Steve, you got time for a question here real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Vice Chair, go ahead.
Well, and then you just answered it just like that. So it's about three hours to keep the sand off and to keep it. I was just always curious.
To get them staked out initially, laid out, it's about three hours. The winds, you know, so we've actually created a T right here, once you get out past the dunes and into the beach. And then we've kind of discovered the winds are a little bit challenging. So we've repositioned them. About two weeks ago, we went, repositioned them, combed them back out. So it wasn't too much effort, but it's going to be a little bit of trial on her.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. Another great example, this is, you know, these are projects our crews are doing. So basically, it's staff time and then materials. So this is the dock at Perkins Peninsula Park. You can see on the left, the previous condition. You can see us working in the middle of winter. When the reservoir is down, it's a pretty muddy affair. But in the end, you can see the finished product over to the right. I mean, these guys are, they're great. They're really good at what they do. So small construction projects, what are the things that we can do that might be bigger than what our maintenance team can do, but what can we hire a contractor to come out and do? And so we've been hearing about this stretch on the boat ramp out at Baker Bay, which is really only, you know, when the lake level comes down, people are still out fishing. And so we hired a company. We got out, they paved about 100-yard stretch, really just to knock that problem out. So folks will be really happy. Other small improvements, replace the roof at Camp Lane. This is a historic structure- Other small improvements, replaced the roof at Camp Lane, this is a historic structure, it's really one of the special gems in our park system, so put a whole new roof on, metal roof, that's going to buy us 60, 70 years. And then we also replaced the lighting inside, it's much more appealing and attractive and, and again, this is less used these days as a formal camp and more for lots of weddings and family reunions and parties and people, people love it, really special. And then we also put an insert into the fireplace as well to make that more efficient and we're working on refinishing the floors. So what you see here is before and after of Orchard Point, you see the cracked ceiling, if you, if I would have taken the picture a week before, there'd be about a foot of grass coming out of those, we used to actually have to come out and string trim our parking lots, that's when you know they're really in bad shape. But we worked with the Roads Division, they put a contract out for slurry sealing in roads and, I know Springfield and some county roads and then we include some of our parks. Great, great deal for the taxpayers, this buys us another five to seven years to do this and it was a great effort with Roads, they came in and did the cracked ceiling, then the contractor came in, did the slurry seal and then together with the Roads Division and Parks, we came back and did all the striping together, so it helps offset their costs as well and extends our tax dollars. So that happened at Orchard Point, the marina at Richardson and Perkins Peninsula Park as well. Added a new restroom up at Forest Glen Landing and then went and met with some guides up there to see how it's working, said, "How's everything working here?" They asked us to put a little bit more gravel, open up the lane there and brush back the boat ramps and so that was pretty well received. Then looking at cooperative projects, so what are we working with some of our partners? And Commissioner Buck, you're out here, this middle picture is from the ribbon cutting. Originally, this project was funded with a recreational trails program grant from the state to rebuild about a mile and a half of trail at HBRRA on the east side and to bring it up to, I don't want to say fully accessible standards, but definitely a much higher standard for surfacing. And then part of this is also, so the county provided about 40,000 to 50,000 in materials, mostly just gravel to support the project and some staff time. And then the friends of HBR, of Beaufort Park and Mount Pisgah also receive a Habitat Management Grant for the park as well. And they're doing things like mowing trails so that, you know, the grass isn't overgrowing the trail and getting rid of blackberries and such. The Arboretum also receives education grants for environmental education programs and here's some great pictures that they sent from some of the programs that they're doing out there. Also David's chair, this is just, you know, part of our goals are increasing accessibility, working with partners and this is just, just one of the success stories. So, we also have David's chair at Hasida Beach as well that folks can rent, but the Arboretum has a program where they're renting a few and, or working with David's chair to help folks, assist folks, actually saw Greg Hyde out there on Sunday helping folks use the chairs and then they're actually going to buy two more of their own chairs and then they're going to sort of build out that program a bit more. But this is Hollis, he's the first one that I know of that's made it to the top of Mount Pisgah in one of those chairs, it was a team effort, but just a great to see the whole team go out there and want to keep doing more of this. So conservation projects, working with the Sheriff's Work Crew to essentially try to pull down all of that English ivy, you know, the whole, the entire way coming into Hendricks Bridge, a lot of these trees and so trying to give them a bit more life. So we're working with the Sheriff's Work Crew to knock that ivy out and to take out some of the blackberries and try to just restore the natural habitat there. Hendricks Bridge is a great, great park. Also working with the River House Outdoor School from the City of Eugene, they come out and volunteer every Wednesday at Orchard Point, it's a sailing club that they do with the youth in the summertime and so this was just last Wednesday's work, I mean, kids get, it's amazing how a 12-year-old gets excited to use a pair of loppers. So, yeah, so you can see they can get a lot done and it helps the park look nice and clean. Mostly it also helps just build those relationships. So, looking at, sorry, just I'm getting ahead, so that's a little bit of what we've accomplished so far, so we're ramping up. In the background, we're engineering projects, we're permitting, it's a lot of pretty heady, complicated, multi-year projects, but it's all kind of moving in the background so that we can get to these exciting projects. So, the first one I want to share here is Eagle Rock Park, so we're putting a new picnic shelter in, construction started two weeks ago and so we're hoping, we've done all the excavation, they're importing and compacting rock and hopefully we'll start forming for concrete in another couple of weeks. The main draw here is actually going to be for folks coming off the river and building relationships with the river guides, you know, this is the halfway point on their sort of middle Mackenzie Run and so this is a common place that they're going to stop for lunch, your main access will be off the river, you're going to be looking right up at the rock, it's just going to be awesome, it's going to be really unique, really unique. Armitage Dog Park, we are finalizing design and getting bid documents ready, I think I shared this project a couple of weeks ago when we gave a public works update, but essentially is adding some picnic shelters into the dog park, reconstructing the parking lot and then moving most of the traffic out of the dog park and sort of into a separate fee station aisle where they can pay on their way into the park and that way you don't have RVs and boats moving through the parking lot when dogs are getting in and out of the car. So we hope to construct it this winter, it should go out to bid and then hopefully contracting in a few months. Harbor Vista Campground, we're putting a new roof on the shower house and then refurbishing the entire inside, so we're putting new insulation in, new roofing, new partitions, ADA upgrades, it's just really going to be a nice fresh up and improvement to the structure there. So that's, we met contractors a couple of weeks ago, the bid closes in I think two days, so it's going to be a little complicated for the work, I think we're going to try to do the roof in the October and then the inside work closer to the holidays when reservations are down and we have some time to block out because they'll have to close the facility for a day or two. Actually sent my maintenance crew out to the coast today because it's so hot, they're going to help work on some of the other structures out there. Also replacing the existing vault restroom at Hasida Beach with a full flush restroom, so working with the City of Florence now to figure out everything that's involved in that, we have about 65% design. And again, these are, this project we're hoping to do in the spring. Glorious North Jetty Parking Lot, so you can see, it kind of speaks for itself why we are making improvements here, but this is a full reconstruction of the parking lot, you can't just put any more Band-Aids on it. And so while we're doing it, this, reconstructing the parking lot, we'll add a fee machine, a nice little vault restrooms and picnic tables and we'll also improve the dive lot parking lot as well. And I think we'll get the most cost efficiency from, with, working with the contractor to do them both. Hendricks Bridge, you can see clearly the condition, it's been a long time, we upgraded the boat ramp and the boat ramp parking lot a few years back and now we're coming in to do the main road and then the main parking lot there and then making some ADA upgrades as well. That'll be a big, big improvement. Looking at upgrading and paving the parking lots, the two parking lots, the main parking lot slash Arboretum parking lot and then the North Trailhead parking lot. In the North Trailhead parking lot, we'll replace the portable restrooms with a vault restroom, we have new kiosks that are already designed and being fabricated and we'll replace these old amenities like that trash can with just nicer, more park-like features. And then you can see in the upper right picture, the foot traffic between the levels and sort of what happens when it rains and we'll actually develop steps between the levels so it's more formal and clean looking. Okay, so, all these exciting things, how do you all stay informed, how do your public stay informed? It's a great question. So this is a look at our main Parks webpage and if you just go down to current projects, that dropdown menu will pop up and then you'll see this map and this is a story map that we've put together in GIS and when you click on it, it shows you all of Lane County and then the icons indicate spots where essentially all our projects are happening. So you can see we have spread of projects throughout the county, less or so out the 58 corridor, but that's because we manage fewer parks out that way. But you can see, so if you want to get more information on any one of these projects, you can click on any one of the icons, either on the left or on the screen in the map itself and then it will pull up a description and it's much more sophisticated. When you're actually in the map and it's zooming in and out, I just didn't want to have to like pull up a separate map in here and look ridiculous trying to figure out the technology, so it gives you a description on the left, it tells you the timeline and when construction is anticipated and the top image up that you see in the left will scroll through various images, so we'll have concepts and more information and, you know, pictures to share. And we'll just continually update this as we are advancing projects and completing projects and the goal is to have a big full map full of completed projects by the time we finish up this levy. So again, this is a tool that we are using, we're constantly updating, it's supposed to be interactive with the public, but for you folks, when your constituents are asking you, "What's going on at this park?", you can always point them to the map or send them on the desk, so. Yeah, thank you and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well done, well done, great presentation, it was really informative and it was really great to see all the great work that you're doing and all the real strategic planning that you're doing. I thought that North Jetty was a picture of some ponds, fishing, I did, I didn't know that was a parking lot, so thanks for clarifying that. Any questions from the board, any comments? Yes, Commissioner Trigun?
Thank you, yeah, I can fit my entire car in one of those.
Yeah.
Needed that like banana for scale in the photo, so people don't think that's just a little, thank you, this is very exciting, as someone who worked really hard on, on the levy campaign, it's just so great to see us get to this point, I'm thrilled. I loved hearing that safety has increased and incidents have decreased and so if you have any more details or anything you want to share about whether that's site-specific or sort of overall, you're seeing a consistency that way, I'm interested to know, that's the first, the first question.
Yeah, I think much of it is just volume of calls.
Yeah, right, I think since we added the security cameras out at Howard Beaufort Park, we're seeing a lot fewer calls, fewer break-ins, those sort of things. As Steve mentioned, we're also increasing our presence out at the park, so because we have additional staff, we can actually be out there and that helps as well in the timing of when we're out there, so.
Great, thank you. Really exciting to see Camp Lane get a little love, my kids decades ago went to sleepover camp there a couple summers in a row, it is a really sweet spot, if people, if you don't know it's there, you just go zooming right by it on 126. I'm curious, you said it's mostly now used for private rentals and so on, how are we promoting, I would imagine that's a revenue generator for us, how do we promote the availability of that for events?
Yeah, it stays pretty booked and what we can do I think is look at year-round, you know, we kind of start fading in October-ish, but if we could make that a year-round venue, I think that would really bolster that park and that area, as you said, you could just blow right past it off the highway. So, we've hired a new volunteer coordinator and marketing person and so that'll be one of the projects is to market Camp Lane and others, yeah.
You mentioned there's a fireplace insert, will that help, is that part of what will make it a little more attractive for winter use or what's the, like I said, we've done summer sleepover camps, I'm not even aware of what, is there heating, what's it like? It's kind of dark?
Still single pane windows in there and, and that's actually much more complicated than you think to keep the historical character of the building, but then replace all the windows and then on a, on a log, you know, cabin-style lodge, it's pretty tough. I would say, I'd add to what Brett had said, that we're pretty, you know, I don't think you'll be able to find a weekend in the summertime where it's not booked, so I think those who know, it's pretty good, it's 500 bucks a day. And when you're looking at other comparable venues to have a wedding, you're going to pay a lot more and 500 a day gets you the whole thing, the whole exclusive use of the property.
So the little bunk cabins are still in place, but we just did improvements to the main lodge?
Sorry?
The bunk cabins are still there, but we just did, the improvements have been focused on the main lodge?
Focused on the main lodge and I think, you know, as we are continuing to make improvements at Camp Lane, we're going to continue to promote it and we'll get more sophisticated with the, the marketing of it and we're actually going to look at, are our rates on target with the market, right? I think right now we're under, which is great because it allows folks, again, part of our mission is we want to be accessible and available to folks.
Yeah, and to that point, I'll just conclude by saying, I know when I first came in office, Brett was one of the first people I met with, we walked around Armitage and so that's great to see those improvements, but I remember Brett, you saying something about, and I can't remember, so please, if you have a more elegant way of saying it, but it was so sort of obvious and yet important to state that you said, "Yes, we need to generate revenue to support our services, but, you know, not everything has to make money and that part of accessibility is keeping some of our parks free, lower cost or, you know, mortgage, folks if you can afford a boat, you can probably afford a few more bucks for your mortgage." And that was just such an important, it was so important to me to know that we had a leader in the department who was thinking about a holistic approach to a park system instead of just one-off, how much can we get out of this park? And that the free, the free resources are the ones we don't invest in because those don't make us money, like this is such a great example of how we make investment in the system.
Right, right, you know, a goal is to get cost recovery for our services, but we also know that there's a lot of folks within the county who can't afford our parks and so I do think it's important that, you know, we think holistically about everyone and, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity I think to improve the overall diversity of folks who can actually access our parks and it's, we're seeing it, you know, every day, we're seeing more and more people out there. But, what we really want to do is think about getting cost recovery, yet providing those discounts for those folks who do need it. But, you know, like it said, it's, it's hard to justify $5 for every park, they're not all worth the same, but, you know, as Steve said, we certainly need to look at the market, make sure we know where we are and make sure also that things are affordable.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Buck?
Thank you. I am excited to see all that's happening and I think it's so important, like when we were able to go celebrate Trail Three being completed at, at the park, that we do these celebrations as often as we can when you complete different segments, like even if it's repaving at the coast, because that's a big deal, and having some kind of celebration about that along the way that so you can acknowledge those wins, but also keep people informed of all the different things that you're doing throughout the next few years. I think that will just really keep the public engaged because if we wait till the end of the five years and say, "Look at what we've done", people might forget about all this great work that you're doing throughout the years, so I just hope that you can keep that up. I don't know that they look the same every time because you're doing different things, like, you know, when you put in a new restroom, that, I would want to cut a ribbon, but that may not be what you want to do, because those are just so wildly popular for people to even say they want to go initially to that place. But I, I just want to encourage you to continue to keep those smaller celebrations along the way up and, and, because I had a good time, I went back and walked it later with my kiddo and it was great because you had these lovely benches along the way and I have to say for kids who are not quite ready to do a long hike, being able to say, "I'm going to go from this bench to the next bench to the next bench" and I think that's really wonderful and I don't know what it takes to sponsor a bench at the park, but that's a great way to also get the community involved.
Yeah, that's, well, we just went to a soccer tournament up in Portland over the weekend and I have a four-year-old and she kept saying, "How much longer daddy?", I keep saying, "Another 10 minutes, another 10 minutes", but it's, yeah, I mean, having those rest areas, those stops are really critical, I think, for a lot of folks, even those that are in peak condition, it's 100 degrees out there, so we want to find some shaded areas with benches, right? But, you know, talking about the ribbon cutting ceremonies or events, you know, we'll have a lot of opportunity for that and we're looking at the north side of the park, for instance, and the improvements we're going to make at the north parking lot, not just a restroom, but also a brand-new kiosk and the paving and all those sorts of things. And then, you know, Camp Lane, you know, the improvements we make up there, we want to have some sort of event and as well over there at the coast, Harbor Vista and North Jetty, so those are really important, like you said, to, to recognize the folks that helped out and, and also just to kind of celebrate those little wins along the way.
Vice Chair?
Yeah. This is going to possibly be in the spirit of Commissioner Farbey and gone, but we are very lucky and very blessed to have the parks we have here in Lane County, you guys are doing a great job and I love that you are adding and updating, but also focusing on maintenance and, and the, the equipment purchasing, I mean, beside the fact I love Kubota, that's a, I mean, that's stuff that we, we will use for years and I think that's one of the biggest concerns when you pass a levy, are we going to fix what we had, are we just going to? are we going to fix what we had, are we just going to add more problems, which is, you guys are, you guys are doing a great job with that. So, yeah, I just want to say, thanks, great, great presentation, very exciting, I always, always love hearing from you guys, it's the fun part of the job, so, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys make a great team, and thanks for coming back at our request. I, I can't, I echo all the responses that my colleagues have made too, of what you're doing and how you're doing it. I, I can't wait to cut a ribbon at a restroom, honestly, I mean, it'd put me on your first invite list, that would be pretty exciting in my book. But I can't imagine Hollis being on top of Mount Pisgah, as, as excited as that young man is, I can't imagine what that moment was like, so I was just looking at that thinking, wow, that was a, a moment that I sure wish I had witnessed, so. Good for you for handling that, and you said it was a little more difficult, so I, I assume there's other adjustments that are going to make that trek for those that go after him a little easier, so. Good on you, that, that's a wonderful program, and that's going to bring a lot of joy to people, I was just never going to have that opportunity, so that's really, strikes my heart, so thank you for that.
Yeah, sure, and there's a stretch there right before you get to the summit, I'd say about what, 150 feet-ish?
There's a few stretches, yeah.
Yeah, where we need to improve. It was pretty amazing that he made it to the top, and you'll see his name, it's Hollis or Hall, you know what. But, yeah, I mean, he was just so eager to get up there, that was a great moment.
Oh, good, good on you. Yeah, Commissioner Trig.
Thank you, just, I was just looking, and it may be trying to pay attention and on an iPad, but it was a little hard to find the projects link on the webpage, and I would love us to brag a little bit more and make it a little easier to find that. You have to really kind of understand the landscape of our website to know that there's this dropdown menu way down low, and it's not even at the top, so I'm also kind of looking in the back of the room at our PIO, it might be something to think about, how could we get a banner on there, or something that just makes it really obvious if someone goes to our parks page that they can click a link to see all the improvements that we're making and how we're spending those levy dollars, just make it a little easier to find.
That, that's great feedback, and we've actually been reworking the whole website in the background too, so, well, we'll...
Great, thank you, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and your expertise and your direction in the park system, well done, well done. We'll see you again, I'm sure. Our next item on our agenda is Commissioner's business. We have announcements, some comments, and committee reports, so we'll just kind of lump those together, if folks want to just comment on any of those that's on their mind or heart. Who wants to go first? Commissioner Buck, please.
I will just mention that last week, there was the annual pickleball fundraiser at LCC, and since we're talking about parks, we did include $500,000 towards their pickleball facility. They're going to start actual construction in about May, and hopefully be done by the fall. They're still fundraising, but that will be a huge addition to sports venues in the area, they're very excited, it's a great group of people.
I'll wait, I have an assignment request as well, so wait till we get there.
Question?
Well, this is kind of an announcement slash committee reports, we spent a couple of days over in Florence last week and went to the possible new opioid treatment center with Mayor Rob Ward and City Councilor Sally Wance. We had a great meeting there, Aaron Reynolds, the city manager, was also there, and we're going through some public comment with, there are, there are some concerns there in Florence, and I spent most of the day meeting with other groups, and went, met with Rotary, met with the Realtors Group, and I think we're, we're gaining, we're gaining headway there, so it's, it's positive, it's a beautiful building, and it's going to work out perfect, and it's going to have roughly 15, maybe 1800 square feet in the back that will allow for some more services to be provided there in Florence, so that's all, always great news, anytime we can get them more help. And then just a shout-out to our PSCC budget group on how hard they've been working and the amount of teamwork they continue to show while navigating a very, very tough budget cycle, so, just want to tell everybody in that group, thanks.
Good, good job. I just want to remind people, it's a couple of weeks away, the Springfield Block Party, September 5th starts at 4:00 AM, Main Street's going to be closed, a few other streets will be closed, it's in combination with the Latino celebration that happens down there at the park, and it's garnered 10,000 people last year, and they're expecting even more this year. It's the only free citizen downtown event that we do, and it's a big one, and hats off to Benjamin Wilkinson and his wife Jen, who have headed that program up for the last couple of years, and they've really expanded, done a great job. So, September 5th, 4:00 PM, Springfield downtown, join us. All right, let's move on to any future board assignments. Commissioner Trig, go ahead.
Thank you. Colleagues, we all received a email from Rick Henderson with the Oregon State University Extension Service requesting that they come before us. Speaking of levies, we just heard a great presentation on all the services that the community is having made available to them through levy dollars, and the OSU Extension Levy is a five-year levy, will be up for renewal next year, and they would like to come present to us on what they've been doing with those dollars, so we have a better sense of grounding in the impact on community as we consider putting an extension to that levy on the ballot next year. So I'd like to make an assignment request, if there had nods, to have the administrator and staff work with OSU Extension folks to come and give that presentation sometime before the year is out.
Gladly.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else with a future board request? Give Mr. Mokrisky a minute or so to write that down, so he can repeat it, go ahead, sir, go ahead and review it.
Thank you Chair, we, we did get an email from the director of, Regional Director of OSU Extension, so we certainly can add that, they asked for the dates, I don't know if you mentioned this Commissioner, August 26th, September 10th, September 23rd, or September 24th, so we'll work with our board coordinator to identify a date that, that works best for the board's calendar.
And just to clarify, I just said before the year is out, so if those dates don't work, I mean, I think he was just trying to get sooner rather than later, but if those, my assignment wasn't related to the dates they requested, just for clarification.
Great, any other business for the good of the order? All right, before I adjourn, I need to announce two things, an executive session and a gathering that we'll have on Friday. First, I'll do the exec session. The Board of County Commissioners will meet in one executive session at 1:30 PM this afternoon. This session is to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiation, as it's held to pursuant ORS 192.6602D, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purpose listed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all other members of the audience are precluded from attending, and representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. Members of the news media are not allowed to tape, video, record, or otherwise record in an executive session, and verbatim notes are prohibited. No decision may be made in an executive decision. We'll return to public session Tuesday, August 26th at 9:00 AM at Harrisall, and one more final announcement, on Friday, this Friday, at 1:00 to 2:00 PM, stabilization center site visit and listening session will be underway. The Lang County Board of Commissioners will be hosting a stabilization center site visit and listening session on this Friday at August 15th between 1:00 and 2:00 PM on International Way in Springfield. There may be a quorum of Lang County Board of Commissioners, however, no actions will be taken, and Commissioners will not deliberate towards any decisions. And if there's no further things for the good of the order, we will be adjourned, as our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 26th, we are adjourned.